Our meeting is to plead pleads of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under the principle of justice, law, called into order, have a very extensive agenda. So when you see that you're next on the program, if you would make your way closer to the podium, we'd much appreciate that. Your Honor, Judge Paul.
Good morning, everybody. I'm gonna make this as quick as I can because I know you guys have the schedule. The two things I'm requesting this morning. I'm requesting to move some money from my insurance budget over to my pro temp line item. I was just talking to Jen. With a rack of senior judges available, I've had to use pro temps a lot more often this year. Again, it was last year, I'll go again this year. I'm trying to figure out a good medium for using a local attorney as opposed to the judge, the senior judge. And with Judge Rush retired completely, he's probably the best option we had. And so now I've been going outside the county to ask other judges. So I'm just asking to move that. Pretty simple, but if you have any questions, we can chat about that. The biggest thing that I'm asking for is the $10,000 additional appropriations on the public defender, conflict public defender issues. I'm gonna give you a lot of information, and I know most of you already know this, so it's refreshing. But the way judges are evaluated in terms of how busy we are is under the weighted case management system. Basically, we, like you all, submit a ton of reports at the end of the year to tell us how busy we are, what kind of cases we have. And those are weighted. So for instance, a small claim only gets half as much credit as a regular case, as a divorce case. A misdemeanor only gets half as much as a felony. Now, I don't like that system, and I think we're all taking a lot more time and effort into a civil misdemeanor DUI than what you can felony sometimes, but that's what we have, and that's what we're stuck with. So at the end of the year, the court then assimilates that. If something encountered somewhere says this is what a judge should be at, which is the level of the number of cases they have. And that's not a number, like a one. Or if you're at 1.5, that means you're doing the work of one and a half judges. So this past year, I got assigned a 1.4. So right now, we are so busy in my court, that what we're doing is basically one and a half, the work of one and a half judges. So Judge Rush and I now have to sit down and try to move some of those cases into his court just to take some of that pressure off. So what that really means for this is that I'm getting a lot more of the drug cases that are coming in. Do you recall when the legislature revamped the code in 2014? It took a lot of the drug cases and they moved them downward. So instead of being circuit court, they're now in superior court. And then what that's causing is for me to get a lot of folks who are in the stages of addiction, they're holding on addiction, as you know, most of those folks don't have, they're not working, they're not paying a rent, they're not able to do the things that we would normally do, and they also, they're called hard individuals. And I'm appointing a lot more public defenders. And we're getting those in more than just one at a time. When I first took the bench, the primary case that I had was your standard DUI. Anybody can get one of those for the most part. I had the pleasure of sentencing my knee surgeon. And clearly, an orthopedic surgeon is not gonna need a public defender. But now that we've transitioned more and more into what I call the addiction phase with the folks here in my court, I'm just having to appoint a lot more public defenders. And when we get more than one, Blue Gate's shipment of white leather can't represent our defendants, so I'm having to appoint alternate counsel. We don't have anybody locally that wants to do that. So I'm hiring John Kitch out of Fort Wayne and Julie Gars out of Warsaw. And I have to pay them to travel, so that also adds to the cost. So basically, what I've done is I've pretty much run out of money for this year, and I'm asking for an additional $10,000 to cover the cost of those conflict public defender runs for the rest of the year. So that was as short and concise as I can get it, but there's a whole lot more that goes into it. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
I know you can't predict the future, but do you anticipate that that should cover the rest of the year?
I'm looking at it well, based upon what I projected in terms of the number of cases and the number of folks that I currently have assigned to the public defenders. That should cover it. And Judge Rush and I talked a little bit about this in our budgets for this year, because we've increased that ask for this year. But I'm comfortable that'll cover it for this year. And if it doesn't, I told the attorneys they may have to wait until next year to get paid. If that $10,000 doesn't cover it, but I'm confident that'll cover it for this year. Thank you for that question. Very good question. Any other questions?
Any other questions for his honor? Do I have a motion for the transfer from 32004 Insurance $500 to 12101 Pro Ten Judges?
I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer resolution and that we approve the additional appropriation of $10,000.
Second, and it has been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion raised right hand? The motion passes unanimously.
I didn't bring cookies, but if you're hungry tomorrow around lunch, I'll overhand it to you.
Good morning. I'm DJ Sigler. No, I'm not really DJ Sigler. I'm Jennifer from Prosecutor's Office, filling in for DJ. So I'm here to request an additional appropriation. Really what I'm requesting is that we establish a line item for our pretrial diversion that we've not established in our budget last year. This is a fund that we have available, but we did not establish a budget for it last year. So I'm asking first to establish the budget, and then to appropriate $20,000 into that budget for equipment. The need for the equipment really to offset some of the costs that come out of County General for a vehicle for community corrections, our office is going to help fund that. So that's what I'm asking for this fund to be established for and for the additional appropriation.
So it's just funded for 2022 or '23? What, you want to do the $20,000 now?
This year, yes.
And you have no, it's not any other line item?
Correct. It is not. This is a fund that we obtained funds by offering what's called a pretrial diversion. It's essentially a way for us to work with a defendant for them to have a resolution to their criminal conviction without getting a conviction on their record. So they pay a fee, stay out of trouble, they might have to do some counseling, maybe some community service, and then we get a portion of those fees. Some of the deferral fee pays to court costs. The rest of that comes into this pretrial diversion fund. We just did not appropriate it, or we didn't have that in our budget last year. So we're asking one to establish that as a fund, and two to put $20,000 of funds that we already have into that to pay for this community corrections equipment.
I know in the past that the prosecutors helped with that same type thing. What line item was that, what was used for that?
That's a good question. Generally, we would use the infraction deferral. So that's, we have a deferral fund for infractions. So if you get a speeding ticket, you can go on what's called the deferral. That's a way to keep that ticket off of your license, pay a fee for that. That includes court costs, so do the clerk. And then the prosecutor's office gets a portion of that fund. This is similar to that, but instead of infractions, it's for criminal cases.
And where are these, what fund are these dollars in right now?
They are in the pretrial diversion fund is the name of the fund. That's, I believe you have it in front of you.
Yeah, so it already exists.
The fund exists, correct. Yes, sir.
The fund exists, but the line item in the budget doesn't exist to put the money in and then to be spent.
Correct.
So how are you spending the money now?
We, I don't believe we've been spending money out of that fund. We've been using the infraction deferral fund to offset costs. And that fund obviously is becoming depleted because we've been using that to offset costs. I know some of the information is that we've tried to keep things from DJ coming over and asking you guys for money from County General, that he's trying to use that infraction deferral fund. Now, with that lower than what he would like, we want to use the money that's in the pretrial diversion. And long story short, a lot of the marijuana cases, the first time marijuana cases qualify for the deferral. And that's been where a lot of the money is coming from and going into that fund. That's a way for people who have a first time offense for marijuana, a way for them to maybe get some counseling, to learn about the laws, and then to pay a little bit back for not having a conviction on their record for that specific case.
Do you or Cindy, do you know what the total amount in that fund is at this point in time?
I cannot.
It's more than $20,000 though, right?
Yes, yes. I don't believe that. Fund has been budgeted probably in a couple of years, correct?
We have not been using that fund, and now the infraction deferral is getting depleted. So we're going to start this new fund for a couple of years.
Do I have a motion? I shall move second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussions or questions?
In the motion, it would be to create a line item. And if so, what is that line item number? Is that something Tamara, you can tell us what it would be?
I believe the line item number is 2505.4001.
So that's just preexisting? It just has not been in the budget?
That is my understanding, yes.
Well, there's no line item in the budget. So are we appropriate at this time during the budgetary cycle to add a line item to this current year's budget? Is that acceptable? I don't know that I can remember doing that before.
Yeah, we can do that. It would be treated kind of like an additional sound of a trail on our end. But we would do that.
I have no further discussions along with what we're doing is within the rules of what the State Board of Accounts allows. That was my only questions.
No other questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion raised right hand? And it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. So what we're doing is taking money that's been a grant, the Toro Sex, and making a new line item for person in there, which we've already done for 2023. We realized earlier, about six weeks ago, that we were using the wrong fund. So that money is gonna be taken out into this other line item that we created in the grant, and we're paying back the $1159 part-time with the excess. So we're just moving money from a grant. And that's all we're doing. So no additional appropriation, nothing like that.
But again, it does have that question of an additional line item budget here that we've asked about.
Right. It's within the grant. So a couple of years ago, the Honitor's Office asked us to start budgeting our grants. Before, we didn't have budgets. We just had to put money in there and we spent out of it. So now, every year, we have a budget line item for certain grants. All we're doing is creating another one that says person, because that's what's gonna happen next year. And we're just starting now instead of January with that.
Do you make a motion? Do you do the transfer? A motion? Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Motion and a second on the floor. Any additional questions?
And again, my concern will still be the same. Are we allowed by the State Board of Accounts to create additional line items in the current year's budget at this point in the budget cycle? So.
I agree with that.
And Tamara?
Talk to me about it. We find that some money there, and it would be appropriate to use them because she was actually supposed to be paid out of this budget, so she was supposed to pay out this budget.
I would direct that you include in the minutes the reality of the question of these two issues. And for the next meeting, give us back a confirmation of the information that you've received, so it can be recorded in the minutes. If that meets everyone's approval? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. And it does pass unanimously. Thank you, Scott. The Honitor's Office, we have an additional appropriation stuck in here. Do you want to speak to this, or would you like the Commissioner to speak to it?
Well, I can speak to it. So we had, we put payroll software. And when we put payroll software, it was out of the office, and the prosecutor decided to use write stuff for an extra month and a half just to kind of get us on our fee, which was a good idea. But we had not budgeted for two softwares at the same time for a month and a half. So due to that, I left them short, but we are projecting an additional $4,100 to cover that. We have a very tight budget, so we didn't actually know where we were going.
So this is essentially payroll and two different programs at the same time in order to have continuity? Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Well, I have a question. The Commissioners didn't feel comfortable with the new payroll system? Or you just wanted it backed up for a month and a half?
At that time, it was a commission that was needed from the old system to run the new system. And they were going to eliminate the old system, the people, write stuff, I think is what it was. Write stuff was gonna eliminate everything that we had. And we still hadn't gotten our operational, the new system. So we thought we had to keep going for a month. It was a matter of not having everything we had.
Not in the legal sense, but essentially, we were held hostage for our information.
Pretty much, no.
And you don't have any other line item you could move money out of for this in your budget?
That's in our budget.
That's in the Honitor's budget?
Yeah. And do we have, no, we run our budget on a very, very tight budget.
You're gonna ask to have a move? Do we approve this?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second for this addition appropriation. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. And let it show unanimously. Thank you.
I'm here today to ask for a check we received on that day. We go back to February 2019, and the jail did some damage to our R4, what we call the rubber room, forcing the walls up. The final cost that we paid for that damage was $2,245. We found a case that Prosecutor's Office also filed for restitution. So far, we have now received our first check of $1,355 of restitution, asking for that to be put back into the jail equipment maintenance and repair line item, class 4122.
Where is it sitting in County General right now?
It's, if you guys don't agree with it yet, then it would be placed in the County General.
How is your?
Your maintenance budget?
What's that budget like for the year? How much of it have you used? What's your projection on that? Look, I don't have the computer available down here to say.
No, we don't. I didn't hook it before it came over.
In my paperwork, I don't find a copy of an actual transfer request form, which needs to sign that to make the transfer. I see all the information about it. And is the check currently being cashed?
No, it's still right here in Attorney's Office late June.
I'm sorry, I don't have stuff coming out. I'm here to fix it up.
Historically, we've always run time that and usually transferred some money to make it through. Takes care of our cleaning and other things in the jail too. So you know, we go through that fairly quickly.
And I just think for general accounting purposes of what our expenses are, it does need to go into that fund, so that we know what we spent directly rather than just going in the general fund. But I don't know that we can do this without the resolution request form, or not the resolution, the transfer request form to sign.
Jody, can you shed any light on what we've done?
We've done it, yeah, absolutely. Without the trace. We have to put it in. Yeah, it wasn't.
So you're gonna deposit directly?
Into the.
Into this number?
For the 130, or 0132.
What was the transfer?
So it's not a transfer?
It's a preparation judgment going down our end. So I would receive it into County General, and then I would go in to do a preparation judgment and add it into that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we're allowing to deposit that into his transfer fund, or not transfer fund, but jail maintenance. Thank you.
Second. Do I move you a second? Any further questions? All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. And let it show that it's passed unanimously. Is there anyone here to speak to the coronavirus emergency supplement? What can you be corrections here?
Yeah, can you have them?
I have another one. Okay. I think last month, to get back with my memory, last month, there was reclassification. I think Jim brought it to the jail commander that passed. With that reclassification, we need to request more money onto the jail commander's line item.
We do not have transfer paperwork on this. It's already passed. We are gonna pass the, or we're going to consider correction or change to the salary ordinance here that reflects that position.
You shouldn't have this attached in. Or $4,747, but I, my is a pre-probation to using the.
Okay, I guess it is here. It's picked up. It's part of the, it's part of the salary ordinance, Amanda. So we will cover that. I'm sorry. And there is no one who?
Jim, I don't know what could be prepared. That was a reimbursable grant, so that's probably an additional appropriation request that's been submitted.
It is an additional appropriation?
So that was a reimbursable grant, so we probably need to save that money after we close, stop using the fine, which is probably a proper grant, might have to see after we close the fund. How much is it? What's on the form?
It says coronavirus emergency supplement, Department of Community Corrections. Would you like the line item numbers?
No, the amount. This is a breakdown of three line items because of the last pay. So this was a one-time grant. So we had people being paid out of there, but because the last pay of the year is in the next year, there is no money in that for next year. Does that make sense? So in 2021, it was a grant, but the last pay was paid out in 2022. That's always how it works. The 26 pay is always wrapped around for the next year. So in 2022, we didn't have any money appropriated because it was a one-time grant. Therefore, that last pay of the year, put that grant negative in those three line items. So it's basically just kind of cleaning up that grant.
Questions? Do I have a motion? Are we clear on what we're actually doing here? I mean, it's grant money left over, right? That's what you're moving? Around by the way?
It's not grant money left over. It's grant money that was not there because we didn't appropriate it in 2022 because it was a one-time grant. And every year, there's 26 pays. And every year, that 26 pay is gonna be on the next year. So in 2021's budget, that 26 pay happens in 2022. This year's pay on the 26 pay is gonna happen in 2023. If that makes sense. So because there's no money in there in 2022, it went negative the last pay.
There was no appropriation?
Yes, no appropriation.
The money was there. There was no appropriation because the grant was only for one year. But it was posted, that last pay was posted till 2022.
But the money was there?
The money was there, yes.
Just not appropriated. We just had to clean it up, so we don't have a negative.
I'll make an additional appropriation. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? And if not, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Cindy Baker?
Good morning. My name is Cindy Baker, and I'm the Director of Troy School. And we obviously operate within Whitley County. So we think from time to time, we need to update everyone and make you aware of the things that are happening out at Troy School. This past June, we had nine graduates. We served 56 students in last school year. And are on track to serve around 50 to 53 this school year. We have entered into a contract with Whitco Career Academy to be sending some of our students to the Career Academy if they qualify to be sent there for some vocational skills training. We're really excited about that new opportunity for our students. It's something that we haven't had been able to take advantage of before. So we're really excited about that. We also, in the past, have always offered mental health services to our students as part of being enrolled at Troy. And instead of contracting with an outside service provider, we have now hired our own in-house staff person who will be providing mental health services to our students. And last year, we had some hiccups with our service provider, and only about 20% of our students were able to enroll in mental health counseling. We believe that that will jump and at least double, close to 50%, since we have someone on staff who will be taking care of those services for our students. We work pretty regularly with some school corporations within the county. But if you're not aware, we're our own independent organization. We are not falling under an umbrella of any other school corporation. We're our own nonprofit, 501(c)(3) accredited school. But the kiddos that we provide services to usually are struggling in a regular school environment and need something that's different, that's like Troy. Whitley County has very few options when it comes to education. And so we are the only alternative accredited school in Whitley County. And once a student graduates from Troy, they receive a Troy School diploma. It's recognized by the Department of Ed and the State of Indiana. And so we are just continuing to operate within the community. And just wanted you to be aware of what we're doing. If you want to wear us, we would love for you to come out sometime and take a tour and see what we're doing. We have a great staff, about 17 individuals on staff. They mostly work part-time, three or four days a week. Just because what we do is emotionally draining, trying to be a support system for these students and help them earn their education. But just wanted to let you know that's what's going on at Troy. If anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Or if you ever want to stop out and see what we are about, feel free to come out and take a tour. So anything?
Cindy, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Does the state still give so much money for a student to go to high schools and stuff? Did they come to you? Did any of that money follow that?
We are what's called a voucher school. So we do receive the state portion of funding for a student if they qualify. But that's about half of what a public school system would receive. Because we don't receive like the county funding that goes along with it or federal dollars. We only receive what we would get from the state, what the state would give to a public school. But we receive 90% of a portion of the ADM, is what it's called. So yeah, it's not equal. But we do receive funding for students who qualify.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What are your other major funding sources?
Sure. We write a lot of grants and we do fundraisers. We have a fundraising event actually coming up on August twenty-seventh. So about a third of our budget comes from the Troy Scholarship Program is what it's called, but it's the voucher system in the state of Indiana. And then the rest of it comes through grant writing, fundraising, school contracts. If you contract with the school to provide services for a student, they pay us a fee for that. So that's about the breakdown of it.
I know we, through the commissioners, will give some money through the senior program.
Yes, yes, yes. That's part of grant funding. So yes, absolutely. We're super grateful for that. It helps us out tremendously.
Do you pull students from other counties?
Occasionally we do. We've had some folks from Allen County, Noble County, Robash County, Cosiasko County. If that happens, it may just be one or two students per year. Yes, but we do. I mean, we have had kids from those counties pretty regularly. Someone from somewhere else hears about us and wants their students to attend there. And if they can provide the transportation, then we're open to that as long as they qualify for either paying the tuition or the Troy Scholarship voucher. Yeah.
What's your graduation rate?
Yeah, we have a really successful graduation rate. Ninety percent of our kids who are on track to graduate do graduate, which is really successful for us. Because most of these kids would just be, if they would probably tell you, they would have dropped out of high school if it weren't for Troy. So we're able to provide them what they need to get through their academics and make sure that they get that high school diploma. Because we know our community is much better for that community when these students graduate from high school. And plus they have the potential to earn more as adults with a high school grad, with a high school diploma as opposed to if they just dropped out and were, you know, utilizing services throughout the community and kind of draining, draining the bond a little bit. So, so yeah, we feel like it's a, a huge win for our community. It's a huge win for the student. It sets them up to be successful if they can actually graduate from high school. Okay, thank you so much. It's fun to be here.
Thank you. Our next item is salary ordinance amendment. We have previously made three changes, approved them. For the court administration, the jail commander, as well as the change for the sharing of the part of full-time position, part-time positions together for a full-time position for treasurer and auditor. We already approved those. We just now need to amend the salary ordinance to include those salaries. Do we have an ordinance number?
Twenty twenty-two dash thirteen.
Dash thirteen. Make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirteen. Have a motion, do I have a second? A second, have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. And let it show that it passes unanimously. Now in regard to that, we have an additional appropriation for the additional funds for the jail commander from county general. Four thousand seven hundred and seven dollars. Motion, go please. Second, motion and a second. All in favor, any questions in the discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand and let it show unanimously. The reauthorization of our RDA membership. We tabled this last year. Dale comes to bring us some information.
Yeah, so Dale Book, County Development Corporation. Just a little bit of context, redevelopment authority just started almost seven years ago as a result of the region winning the regional cities award from the state. And we needed a way to have a, a way to disperse those funds. There are eleven counties in northeast Indiana who are part of the RDA. There is no cost associated with being a part of the RDA. By state statute, it's an eight-year commitment. We need to be a part of it again so that we can now get access to the ready funds. Northeast Indiana was awarded fifty million dollars in ready funds from the state. That contract will be written from, with the IDC to the RDA. So the only way Whitley County or any of the other ten counties could get access, access to it is to be a member of the RDA. So this is simply just renewing it. There's no, there's no real amendment to our financial obligation to be a part of it. It's how we get access to these funds. And it, my state said, again, it's, they're asking for another eight-year commitment because that's how the state statutes.
And as I recall, the commissioners have previously approved this. Any questions for Dale? What has the RDA done for Whitley County in the past?
Well, through the regional cities initiative, we received quite a bit of dollars for the, the aquatic center here in Columbia City. Currently with the ready, we've got four programs that we're going to apply for ready funds. A couple in Columbia City, one in Cherubosco and possibly one in Southwood. So, but you know, it's not used that frequently. It's just to disperse certain state funds to the region.
And you said the eight years was a standard commitment?
Yes, it's written in the state code.
Statutory.
Yeah.
And who represents us there?
Well, there's, there's a board of eight. In the past, we've had folks on there. Because there's eleven counties and not every county gets representation. So technically, there's no particular Whitley County representation. But the other thing that people want to know is that it's not just an Allen County predominant group either. In the past, there had been nobody from Allen County and that was the concern that they could be getting favorable treatment, so.
Are there any downsides to being in it? I don't see why we wouldn't just sign out. Okay.
Do I have a motion? We need an ordinance number.
It's going to be twenty twenty-two dash fourteen.
Do I have a motion for the reauthorization of the regional development authority agreement? I move, have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Did it pass unanimously? So what was the final?
One. I did, and that's for my vote, I'm against it.
That's why I asked it unanimously. It is six to one.
I don't know what.
So you did.
I did.
I'm sorry. Five to two. Straight line is hard to see it.
Yeah, it is.
Review of the estimated property tax levy limits and estimated reductions due to the circuit breakers. We see this in our packet. Tamara, what do you have to tell us? These are the figures straight from the state website.
Yeah. So this is just for the estimate. So my case is, I'm just getting your packet, right? So we previously and could talk with you personally about how last year you just kind of went through them and made no changes.
Yeah.
We can determine how much of the levy you would like to contribute between half and half a ton.
So have you each reviewed the countywide estimates for the levies? The impact that we can have on this. The county health assessment fund and the reassessment fund, the community services fund in the four H. Is there anyone who would like to begin a discussion regarding changing our max levy from what we had last year? In any of these areas? Andy, I would like to ask regarding the highway department, the Kuhn Bridge Fund. This nine hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and seventy dollars, that is the estimate. Does that align with your budgeted bridge fees?
We just did a survey. We had to do two bridge requests. We finished one of them, which is a pretty early series behind me all that. We have not yet begun. We were almost sent to two bridges, but if we are able to make the projects start at best, those, those will just have money will be available for us to then begin with projects, you know, in some cases.
The anticipation is that they wouldn't be completed until twenty twenty-three, so we can pin this now and next budget.
If we are able to start them.
Commissioner or development authority person desire to speak to the Kuhn cap? Anyone desire to speak to the max levy for the health department? Reassessment.
Jim and I spoke and we agreed that there would be no change for this year.
We are keeping it at this lower level than the past because we are reducing the balance.
But the levy stays.
But the levy stays the same. Community services. Four H. Do I have a motion to approve the total max levy as it has been presented to us in this form? And also for the countywide, the various municipalities and corporations. So moved. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? See, no questions. All in favor of approving the presented calculated estimate for the maximum levy for the budget year twenty twenty-three, raise your right hand. Opposed? Let the record show six to one. Next on our agenda, Surf Broadband presentation. And how much time were you anticipating? Okay, you have ten minutes. If you couldn't, keep it to three, twenty-five minutes max.
So I just wanted to introduce them. My track is Basinger. I know that I talked a lot about Long Island County. You guys are probably sick to death of talking about it. So today is finally the day. The ask is one point seven million out of Artha. So they asked me, please consider that. If you guys have any questions, just please let us know. My babysitter is COVID, so she's telling me to bring my little guy, so I didn't eat that. So this is June.
And Steve from Surf Broadband.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us and making time of your day. I promised it would be four hours. Can you hit the next slide? A little bit about Surf Broadband. We're based out there. We have seven offices across the region with about two hundred team members. These are our core values, but I think the thing that's most important that I'll talk to you all about is that we believe that broadband is a great equalizer. And if you didn't see anything else during COVID, you saw the stories about school buses parked in rural areas with hotspots so kids could get Wi-Fi so they could do their, their work. And I'm sure that each of you were affected in some way by the lack of broadband, especially in this county. So we believe that having adequate broadband in Whitley County is going to be an equalizer, give you residents access to the same resources that bigger city folks have. And the best example of that is my dad. My dad, seventy-five years old, he's on hospice. He's dying from COPD. He lives in the country. He has no access to broadband. If he went for a service that my company provides to my own dad, he wouldn't be able to shop online. He wouldn't be able to consume media like entertainment, Netflix, that kind of stuff. And really, when his wife died of COVID, it was the way that he saw her in the hospital because he wasn't able to physically be there because he had COPD and it was dangerous for him to go undercover. So this is a deeply, deeply personal issue for me and I'm sure that it's also for you. So can you hit the next slide? So just want to tell you a little bit more about our company. We started in nineteen ninety-nine. As I said, we're based here in northern Indiana. We currently have fiber that goes past fifty-four thousand residents. I'm really happy to say that we'll have about four thousand of those here in Whitley County this year so far. We're hoping to be at eighty thousand passing for fiber by the end of this fiscal year. In a year ago, we were invested in by Bain Capital. That's how we're funding a lot of this fiber growth. And another exciting thing, especially here in Whitley County, is we're the fourth largest telecommunications provider to schools in the state of Indiana. So you got like AT&T, Frontier, Comcast, and then Surf. And that, and we're really proud of that because we provide services to Whitco Schools and Whitley County Schools. Which is really part of why we're here today. So just a little bit of history, like I want to make sure that you all understand fiber and what fiber can do and why it's so important. So I bought the first internet connection at Goshen College in nineteen ninety-one. It was fifty-six K and the entire campus shared. And the important thing about understanding the history of telecom is that you all remember when we had twenty-four hundred baudens, the, the sound and all that, had BBSs. So it went from twenty-four hundred to forty-eight to ninety-six to nineteen-two. And then we all thought the internet was streaming fast when it went to fifty-six K. And the reason that evolution is so important is that fifty-six K was the maximum speed you could do over a phone line. That's why it never went any farther than fifty-six K. The laws of physics said, that's it. When DSL came out and DSL got up to maybe twenty meg in this area, maybe some places close to the phone company are a hundred meg. And then cable came out. And today, cable service in Whitley County where they have it available is probably up to about a gigabyte. But the important thing to know about that, I'm really not here to diss cables, but it's important you to know that it's believed that the technological limits on cable is about ten gigabytes. And that would be ten gigabytes download and something less upload. And you probably noticed during COVID, when you're doing video conferencing or whatever, you have the laggy jerkiness and all the weird response. That's due in part to that lack of symmetry between upload and download. But it's also due to everybody sharing the same line. So with cable, everybody that's on a line shares that data. What, what's important about this and the whole reason for this whole slide is that fiber is basically infinite capacity. It's, if you think about how many frequencies of light there are, it's almost infinite. That's how much capacity fiber optic has. So we believe that fiber optic is future-proof, meaning an investment today won't need to be replaced in the future like cable or ESL or something. Okay, next. Okay, next slide. And we believe that fiber optic is going to unlock all these really cool future innovations like artificial intelligence and autonomous vehicles. I think a good example is if you've been to the Atlanta Airport lately, there's two little colored lights on the trash cans. Those trash cans are connected with Wi-Fi. And a few years ago, the Atlanta Airport Authority made a decision to automate the trash pickup so that they used to have a person that would walk around and pick up the trash all throughout the whole airport, but instead now the trash can tells the dispatcher to send a person to get the trash cans that are only full. So think about the labor savings at an airport the size of Atlanta when they use technology for a really creative thing like that. So, uh, next slide please. So, and then go ahead to the next slide. So this is our plan for Willie County. We've already invested about $5 million building fiber optic here in Columbia City. We're hoping to be done by the second quarter of next year. Frankly, there's been labor shortages, material shortages, getting utilities located underground has been a little bit of a hurdle. That's what's slowing down our progress. It's not by our construction capacity, it's really external factors. But on top of, so that's phase one, then phase two? Phase two is underway now, we're connecting the communities of South Willie, Pierston, and Lawwell for the schools. The next phase of that will be we'll serve 115 homes in Lawwell and 660 homes in South Willie with fiber optic service that's funded by us. We're not asking for any money for that. The other really unique thing here, for the first time in history, providers like Surf are partnering with local providers like the RMC, Northeastern RMC, Casasco County RMC, and Ligtel out of Leganier to interconnect our region to make us stronger. So this fiber that we're building from South Willie to Pierston and Lawwell will interconnect Northeastern RMC's fiber to Casasco County's fiber to interconnect our region in a more powerful way. It's very, very unique time in history. So go ahead, next slide. This is where you guys come in. So when Teresa Green, Commissioner Green asked us to figure out how to help advance broadband, we wanted to create a program that would leverage public dollars along with private dollars, but even go further than that. So one of our outcome goals was to maximize the number of homes we could serve initially, but also to strategically put fiber in place that would enable us to expand in the future. And then also, what's really important about the state next level connect grants through OPR, the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, is that they favor projects that are funded by public-private partnerships. So in this case, Surf has put 5 million already into Willie County, we're planning to invest, as you'll see here, a little bit about another 800,000 in this project. And then we're asking for 1.7 million from the county, but when we go to OPR in September for the next grant, we will be ranked higher than other places where there's no matching funds. So because we're putting money forward, we're asking you to put money forward, when OPR puts out the grant, we'll rank higher than a lot of other communities that are just saying, give me money. So go ahead with the next slide. So for this particular project, we're proposing to serve 757 households. We're asking for 1.7 million from the county, we're going to match that with 870,000 of our own private dollars. And the key to that is, is that not only does this serve 757 residents that have no broadband today and probably never would without some kind of subsidy, but it unlocks the future. So if you go to the next slide. So the next slide is because of this grant, we're going to build with our own dollars an additional 950 households around Blue Lake and Trilates and 760 additional households in Charabuska. And then the next slide. Next slide will be in September or October, when the next level connect grant comes out in the fall, we are going to apply for whatever it takes to serve the rest of the residents in Willie County that are underserved. Of course, we're not going to overbuild a provider that already provides adequate broadband. We're going to ask for state grant money to build fiber to people that have no broadband today. So we think it's about an additional 4,000 homes that would, we would want to cover, and you can see a map of that. I think that might be it. Just an additional areas that we want to cover. And also, there's a letter from the CEO of Ligtel saying that we're in partnership that we're not going to use these funds or the NLC funds to compete with each other. We're going to use them to get to additional residents in the county. Okay. Wow, that was like under 10 minutes. So I'm here to answer any questions. Steve Karner knows where we're at, we couldn't talk about the geography. I think this is a unique time in history where companies like ours are putting private dollars together along with public dollars, and then there's even more money coming from federal state to make sure that every person in your county gets coverage. I think one other thing I want to mention to you is that we, we were awarded about $6 million in state funding to build fiber in Elkhart County and in Laclere County. And in that case, the cost per house to serve was about $3,000 or $4,000. For us to get a 10-year return on our investment, we need to have the cost to be under $1,500. And in Willie County, because of your rural nature, the average costs are over $4,500. So that's why this is so important is because without a subsidy, nobody's ever going to do it. It doesn't make sense for private business to do it without a little bit of help. And we're willing to put our dollars into it, and we're hoping you're willing to do it as well. So what question did you have?
So does that make Willie County a stakeholder then? And at some point, we get payback from you all?
You do with your property taxes. We pay personal property taxes on the fiber assets we put in the ground.
But we're not a stakeholder in the service that you're charging customers for.
Yeah, we, you're right, you're not. We think of it kind of like a road, like, like you got to build the road to get people around, but you don't, it's hard to measure a return on that road. We really take the fiber available to other providers as well on a fair basis, but you're right, no you're not. Good question.
What was the monthly charge for households?
That's a great, that's a really great question. I'm sorry I missed that. So our plans started at $35 a month and go up to $85.
What determines that?
What speed that goes.
It goes to 85.
Yeah, what speed the customer will like. So $35 is 50 megabytes and $85 is 1,000 megabytes. And so I guess I should have said, in case you don't know, like fiber optic is symmetrical, so that means the upload and the download is the same. So if you get 1,000 down, you get 1,000 up versus like the local cable here today, which is probably something in that range, but only about 15 or 20 meg's up. So significant difference. The other really neat thing about our product is that we're offering a price lock guarantee. We all know, because we've all lived it, where you sign up for $50 and then the next year is 70, and the next year is 100. And when we switched at my house from the cable to this, our bill went from $270 to $85. And it's $85 for life. We're not ever going to raise the rate as long as you stay on that plan. Which gives you comfort in knowing that we're not here to just, you know, fly by night, change price and then keep raising over for a lifetime. It's going to stay right there until you need more bandwidth. And that's what we're hoping for, we're hoping at some point you're going to need more than 1,000, which is kind of hard to imagine at this point, but at some point you will, and then there'll be a different plan for that.
What was the name of the investment firm?
Bain Capital.
Are they an actual owner of Surf? Is that the way that they?
They are, yeah. They're the, they're the largest not private owner, and then I'm the largest private.
Okay.
I'm the largest private shareholder.
I noticed that Smith House had been Charabuska's phase four on it. How's the mechanics work to get that into Charabuska since many of the residents are Indiana or Michigan?
Yeah, so the challenge with Charabuska is we, we can't afford to build it ourselves, but if we get the grant, we'll build the fiber from Columbia City to Charabuska, which will enable us to build it using our own dollars. So the reason it was phase four instead of earlier is there is no adequate fiber in the region and we need this grant to get the fiber to them so that we can build it to the houses. Did that answer your question?
Pretty much.
And then we'll apply for pole attachment permits with AEP or NIFSCO where it's available. We figured the worst-case scenario of using more underground construction than aerial. Aerial would be attaching the poles, underground would be directional boring. We're fortunate to hear that Northeastern RMC is a huge proponent of this project, and they've made their poles available to us out of a very fair and reasonable way, unlike anywhere else in the state that we work with. So you have, we really have that going for us here.
Will there be any additional charge to the rural people?
No.
4,000 homes if, if they, you get the 1.7 million from us, is there any additional? Because we had heard that the last 2,000 feet, maybe the homeowner had to come out in the rural area, had to pay back?
Yeah, so the cool thing about the Indiana next level connect grant that we won in Indiana and Elkhart and Fort County is that it actually pays for the drop from the road to the house. So in our budget, we allow for 250 feet. It costs us, you know, about $10 a foot of fiber in the ground. So you can imagine going that if somebody has a mile-long drive, that's a rather expensive proposition for us to try to get back at $35 a month. But when we apply for the next level connect grant in September, October, they haven't decided when it's going to come out yet, we will actually apply for funds for every single address to go from the street to the house so that the state will pay for it. And then when that happens, the next phase will be we'll go to the homeowners, all 4,000 of those folks, and we'll say, whether you want the service or not, having fiber to your door is going to add 3% to 8% property value to your house. If you sign us that or authorizing us to put the fiber there, the state's going to pay for it. So the short answer is there won't be any additional charge unless the homeowner asks out and says, no, I don't want it. And then we come back after we do the grant, we say, well, you didn't want it, now you do. You're 1,200 feet off the road, we're going to pay for 250 feet, we're asking you to pay for the rest.
But, but getting it to the residents down the road, there's no cost?
That's right. Assuming we get the next level connect grant, which you are in a very good spot, because if you approve this, you're providing matching funds, you'll have already proven a track record of success here in the county by doing the project in South Willie, Lawwell, and Columbia City. There's just no reason they won't fund it, and your folks are just horribly underserved in the rural community. And there's never been any other funds, next level connect funds in this county, I'm sorry.
So you're going to use RMC poles?
Where they're available.
Okay, so it's in South Willie, we have Duke in part of that.
Yeah.
Township.
Right.
Will you contract with them to put it on their poles or are you?
If, if, if it works, like, I don't know if you know about poles, but about 40% of the time, the poles are too old or too overloaded, and we have to replace them. And then it's just more expensive to do all that than it is just to order them. So we're literally going to make that decision on a pole-by-pole basis. Yep.
But going with Duke, that's not going at your goal?
No, right. We, yeah, we've already, we've already hired an engineering firm specifically to do South Willie, Lawwell, and Pierston, even though Pierston's not in this county, but yeah, we already have a pretty good idea of what that's going to cost.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
A concern that I have is that Surf will do the infrastructure and then be pressed to sell off the operation of the service in the future.
Yeah, I, we've heard that a lot, and of course, there's no guarantees in life, but the one thing that we do that should ease your concern is that price lock guarantee. Like regardless of what happens in the future, the residents are all protected by that price lock guarantee.
So that is protected regardless of if somewhere?
Yeah, we cannot change the rate.
And that someone who would be after you cannot choose?
That's right, that's right. It's a price lock requirement. That's why we do it, because we hear that concern regularly, frankly, I would be concerned too if I were about to invest 1.7 million dollars into something I wouldn't want my residents to get jacked with, and that's why we do it.
Council, may I even ask a question?
Yes.
From a highway standpoint, I don't know if there's something that may be coordinated in the future, or in this, as far as the coordination of the right way, but I do have a mild concern, and then just I guess an additional question when it comes to that work, do you ditch work for doing the roaming? How deep are your directional wards? And then what is the interruption of service? Is there some sort of, if they are not located correctly, or there is a line that's in my chance because I know the fiber is a kind of a big deal to hit, and there's a lot of things that come into play with repairing those? And so I would be conservative of a lot of the work that we do in the highway department in the right way, or contractors that are in the right way. What liabilities are there? And then what kind of protections that come if there's some sort of damage done to the lines and what interruption in service if there would be them to utilize the service?
Those are really good questions, I'll see if I can remember them all.
Sorry.
I know, it's big. So I think number one, we're a northern Indiana company, so our repair crews come out of Elkhart or come out of, actually jumper, Jumpstart Communications out of this area, I think he actually lives in Columbia City, or just south of Columbia City. So we have local resources to restore service quickly. Our average fiber cut time from the time we detect the cuts to the time we restore our service on a main line, not like an individual house, but on a main line is about four hours. So that is way better than the national budget, who we sometimes see their service out for days at a time because they got to call somebody and call somebody else to find somebody to do the work. In terms of how deep the directional ward, it's really entirely based on local code and what is in the ground. So like in the city of Elkhart, they said, don't, we're willing to be between two and three feet, which is pretty shallow for us. We'd like to be deeper, like four feet, but it's really what you need based on what's already in the ground. So sometimes there's a water system, a storm, we don't know. It's, we're going to work with you, and our project manager will sit off, sit down and have a kickoff meeting with the highway department and, and the right of the engineers to make sure that, that we work together for the best solution for, for you. And I guess what we've done in other counties is we've had kickoff meeting where we basically said, okay, utility locate department inside the county, what's your capacity for locates in a certain timeframe? Do you have any locating, your highway department does, but now there is like traffic signals and that kind of stuff. And we try to coordinate our pace of construction with your ability to locate it, so that it's a partnership. Like what we discovered in our 54,000 homes that we serve so far is that it has to be a partnership. We just come in, really utility, we could just come in and break through and take everybody off, but that's not how we make friends and get customers, that's not how we work. We're a relationship-based business, so we want to do everything we can to make you all happy because we want to be part of the community, as you saw with the fair. Little pat on our back, we pulled off a complete miracle getting service to the fairgrounds. We, I mean, it was literally down the wire. Like it was a complete hail mary miracle, and our team pulled it off. So in fact, we were there not just exhibiting, but we provided the internet to the fairgrounds over fiber optic in a complete hail mary and pulled it off. So that was pretty awesome. Thanks for saying that. Do I get other questions?
Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you, guys.
Commission's report. Now, Chairman, could we have some of the forms that we need to sign come down through the 211?
I'm going to stop for you. I think you did miss, I think I'm wrong, but when you did the salary agreement moment, you did discuss the shared scale commander that needed change as well as with the difference. But Lemon, as you discussed, was being changed and that would be an additional for her help to the internet for the 4D for Lemon. And that was one of the different areas for them.
So we need a motion. Is that the one that you have before you?
Well, I'm looking here, let me tell you. Yes, this is, this is the one for 4D.
Do I have a motion to approve the 1836? $1836 for the 4D program?
I believe Tom's made that motion.
They got the motion with these signatures.
I have a motion down around a second.
Motion in the second discussion. Okay, the motion, raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Commission's report.
As we have been for the last 20 years and a half, we're consumed right now by the jail for the jail project. We had the meeting yesterday, the commissioner getting in and part of that was in science contract with Lincoln Scottville for the CMT project. And they'll, they'll actually send out, and they're going to, very well known in the seal industry, I've worked on at least six steel projects that I know of right now. So that's the, the big project that we're working on right now. Other than that, our meeting was pretty short, we continue to work with day-to-day operations and we appreciate what council has done to work with us.
Do you have any information regarding the health insurance plan for next year?
We announced the health insurance carrier last week, yeah, last week. And we continue our insurance right now. And we continue our insurance right now. We self-funded, they will self-fund the fund right now. We have seven hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. I just paid about five hundred thousand dollars out of our trust fund for our health insurance this year. So we're doing very well with our health insurance. And we will be working on health insurance in September. September, so everything is waiting to go in first of all.
Any questions for the commissioners? Thank you, George. Before we go to the minutes, personnel committee does have an item to bring to you. In ongoing adjustments in the engineer's office and the highway department. There is a change for the head mechanic position in a foreman position in the highway department. And also in the drainage project assistant position that was brought to the personnel committee. Things were sent to WIS or factoring. And we would like, we would encourage that the council pass these three positions changes. I know that you've not seen them all yet, so Katie, Jen, anybody want to speak to this? It is part of the process of us being without an engineer and the transition of what's happening there in those departments.
The council had at previous meetings brought to everyone's attention that they really encouraged the departments to try to work together to everyone's benefit. And Jenny and I inadvertently have found that we have some common needs. Right now, Mike Knappel does find that he needs additional help with some things in the engineering department. And Jenny, I don't know if you want to speak on that quickly?
So Mike has all of our drainage issues, of course, that he deals with. He is getting bogged down. So additional help for him would be very helpful. And with this position also being drainage in the highway department, it's going to help both departments get through some of these problems that we're having.
Initially, when the drainage project assistant, which is currently in the highway department's fund, was created, Brandon Forster, who was the engineer and he was the liaison between both departments, created this position with initially this outcome, I think, in mind initially to have this drainage project assistant work under Mike Knappel, who was the drainage project supervisor. It kind of panned out to where the drainage project assistant in our department was kind of a truck driver and a drainage project assistant. Doing all the drainage issues, but also functioning as a truck driver as well. So our plan is to take this position and share it between both departments as far as drainage size. Or we have added all of the county drain responsibilities as far as what Mike Knappel already takes care of. And then in addition to that, he will keep the drainage responsibilities in the right of ways, the culverts, the ditches, everything like that. And we've discussed just working together as a team to share that position kind of fluidly between both departments. So our plan is hopefully that because of how our department has to keep track of the salaries to report to the state, that we would move this position because it's going to be a shared position, or it's proposed to share position, move that entire position salary to the engineering department. And then that would still leave the assist, or excuse me, the equipment operator position that's in our department that is currently paying the drainage project assistant. That would leave that open to make the other transitions that are.
Tell us about the head mechanic and foreman positions.
Sure.
They're just changes in the job responsibilities.
So the foreman, I'll speak to the head mechanic position first. I'm sure all of you know, as technology moves forward, we are not as well equipped as we need to be right now as far as capability, the technology that we currently have. And not that it's anyone's fault, but there is somewhat of a knowledge lapse when it comes to how technological a lot of this is, all of the computers that are involved in these equipments. So we have found that there is a greater need to bring someone in with more formal training. There has been additional education requirements added to the job description. There's been specific experience added to the job description as well. I'm sorry, requirements. But we really would love to see someone with a formal education, with experience working with computers, with diagnostic technology that comes with all of this new equipment that kind of helps us alleviate some of the need we're sending out equipment. We're sending out vehicles that we have to alternative mechanics, to alternative places to get that diagnostic repair work done, which is ultimately costing a lot of money to our department, to the county in general, just because the labor fees are astronomical. They mark up on parts and everything if they're coming from another provider astronomical. So it's kind of a long-term plan in trying to invest more within the county so we don't have to farm out so much of our repairs and diagnostic work. And that being said, when this was factored in by WIS, it factored higher. So they recommended moving it to the tier one of the labor trades and crafts, to which then they also re-factor the foreman position. And the foreman is the supervisory role to basically all the departmental people below him, which would include the, sorry, the head mechanic. So they took that into consideration along with some other things that were already being done, that were just added to the job description. And factored that one as also being recommended to be moved to the labor trades and crafts, the category one. But they did recommend that that be paid at a higher rate than the head mechanic because it is a supervisory role where the head mechanic is under.
Your flow chart shows the head mechanic going to be the office. That's not correct.
As far as the office manager is actually in a different category. The head mechanic is labor trades and crafts where the office manager is, I believe it's a path.
Sounds like it's on that one.
Yes, I'm sorry. So it does show that, that they're, the pay wise is different and they're under different categories as far as what the actual position fits under.
How would this affect current employees that you have in that position of mechanic?
So it has been discussed with the current mechanic that's in place. And everyone's on the same page. It's been discussed about this. But the current mechanic that's in place has already expressed previously, actually before this, his plan to retire within two years. So the opportunity to provide additional education for the current head mechanic was presented, but it wasn't something that was considered very logically, I suppose, because it seems a lot to invest in someone's education who's going to take it within two years. And then the assistant mechanic was also given the opportunity to kind of explore that option as well. And they have also expressed within the next five to seven years, they will be retiring from accounting. And this is not set in stone, this is just what they've said. So there was, again, no interest in doing any continuing education in order to meet these qualifications or requirements that we find ourselves in.
So then they remove them from those positions, what would they do?
So the whole purpose of moving the, this kind of the part A, B, and C. So the part A would be we would move the drainage project assistant to the engineering office, which frees up an equipment operator pay in our department. So then the head mechanic has agreed to step down into the equipment operator position, which then frees up the head mechanic position to retire.
So the new position is the drainage project assistant?
It would be new in the fact that it would be new to the engineering department. Yes, the position itself is already in place with some minor adjustments as far as job responsibilities. But that would move over to the engineering department. And again, that's just for the technicality of issue of tracking time and certain procedures during the workday when we have to report to the state per our annual report and per our tracking that we are offering to provide the member here.
But the funding would be out of the engineering department?
Correct.
Out of the funds already budgeted to deal with our engineer situation, correct?
We, our budget never had the engineer salary coming out of it.
Because she was.
To obtain the funding from the state, the engineer salary had to be paid out of the highway department to get that forty thousand dollar subsidy from the state. So engineering's budget was never equipped to handle that.
So if this position is approved, there will be a budget appropriation and a salary amendment change?
Yes, just for the engineering department.
And the amount of somewhere forty-eight and fifty thousand?
Yes, I think the recommended salary for labor, for labor trades and crafts is fifty thousand, seven hundred and eighty.
How effective head mechanic financially to go into a position as an equipment operator?
It is about a six thousand dollar salary reduction and we have discussed that with him. There is some concern for him, but also he is in the process of looking into his PERF because he's had personal discussions with PERF on what benefits it is for him to be asked his thirty years with the county. And without relating too much of his personal situation, he's trying to look at the benefits, whether or not it's beneficial for him to stay with his PERF for the next two years or whether or not it will be something that he wants to, of his own volition, go and find another position while they're on his PERF at the same time.
You're head mechanic, how much education do you expect that person to have?
I really would like to see someone who has a certificate or a degree in some sort of a mechanic or diesel technology. There's a lot of different places. There's a place in Ohio that has one, Uno, I believe is what it's called. There's school down south, but it's really just your certificate or I believe it's like an associate's degree that has its diesel technology. And then a lot of the positions that are available now, they are also requiring knowledge for computer technology or in diagnostic, things like that that are a little bit more technical, a little bit more computer savvy. So really, it's just somebody who's comfortable operating computers, not any kind of formal computer training, but someone who is able to operate the things of Excel and Outlook and that sort of opportunities.
So this person that you hired that had this kind of a degree or knowledge, how much money do you expect to spend on equipment so he has the tools there to work with?
Sure, so that will be kind of a long haul plan. We do currently have some diagnostic equipment on hand. We do have computers and a couple of different readers to be able to do limited things. But the idea long term would be to invest a little bit more into the shop so that way we are able to have the capabilities in-house. Depending on the types of equipment, depending on the make, manufacturer, things like that, there's really a wide realm of opportunities as far as the diagnostic equipment or technology that we could purchase. But it's one of those things that we'll kind of have to approach when that time comes. But again, that will be something that will be built into the highway department's budget and not something that we anticipate coming to the council for in the future.
What do the townings pay their head mechanic?
I did not do any kind of research into that. There are different counties actually who have multiple mechanics and they don't necessarily have a head mechanic. But I did not look into that because listed the salary study based upon the job description, the qualifications that were in that.
I just was wondering what counties was having to pay for a qualified person.
Sure.
Then on the engineer part, what if we hire an engineer? Because right now we're hiring a firm, right?
Right, so we are still working with USI. And they're doing a great job for us. It's just we don't have them in-house. So we have to have meetings with them bi-weekly, make sure that we have all of the documents that they need to sign off on certain things. Planning and building needs with us as well because there's things they need as well. And then I think Katie May needs things. If we can finally get an engineer in-house, it would be very needed still. But we are still working with USI until then.
Jenny, would you speak to the process of trying to hire an engineer to this point?
As far as what?
It's been posted for how long and what are the responses?
I'm not sure how long it's posted exactly, but I would say probably a month or half. I've received zero applications, zero resumes. I do have it posted on, edit on LinkedIn, I have it on our county website. I have it on a place called Handshake, which goes out to about, I put it on about twenty different universities within a fifty mile radius. I put it on EDC website. I have a page for job opportunities.
And no responses to this point.
And it's not anticipated that this will be a need for an engineer. I think we do very much still have a need for an engineer. This would, as Jenny and I did discuss, help to prepare for in the event that Mike does retire. He is able to retire, I think, whatever he chooses to. This will give us the capability to then prepare for Mike's retirement or work on some of that information and knowledge of the drainage, the engineering department to another individual who would then be capable of taking it up rather than what we've been doing since we lost our engineer. We're often just trying to figure out what we can with no one to take in that information from.
And typically, the personnel committee would have brought these job classification reviews to you. And then it would be a month at least before we receive the recommendations from WIS, but it came back before the meeting. I would say based on our discussions that the drainage project assistant is critical at this point in time. So it's for your consideration for us to vote for these positions or to wait until next month, which is more.
You know, I think we all need to keep in mind too that what Katie has done is exactly what we've asked all department heads to do. And that is to get together to see where they can work together. And this is a perfect example, in my opinion.
The only thing we've got to watch is that we don't somewhere along the line add another person down the road. I think that's happened before where all of a sudden somebody gets shared and then all of a sudden another employee came in, so.
There would be an extra person, but they just said it was still needed.
You know, if we can get that forty thousand, that's historically has helped take care of part of a position. And I don't know how many we're using, USI, I don't know what that is going to be at another app per year.
Yeah, it's probably on track. She's not here at the moment, but she gets the invoices. It's been roughly three to five thousand a month. And then there's other things that we need at different times. The drain assessments at the beginning of the year, spray information too. So it's, and not to exceed, which I think you have an actual one in there. And our not to exceed originally was fifty thousand with a couple of other things along with it.
Do I have a motion to approve any or all of these position changes?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, correct? That we approve the three positions. Any further discussion?
I know the highway, we're doing a lot of moving around people and for the drainage port, but I think we need to do it. I mean, so everything runs a little smoother. On the head mechanic, I know for a fact you take a truck full of wind now, it's going to be a hundred fifty dollars an hour late. I mean, she's trying to look forward to get that computer equipment, to get them plugged in to save us some money in the long run. She's got some now, but we're just going to have to update, get more and then they can.
And then they can, the diagnostics, then they can take care of a lot of it in-house and we will have to send it out. So that's, I just wanted to add a little bit to that.
And I also appreciate that because I think you're looking forward to the future and how it can be a cost savings. The only thing that, that I'm uncomfortable with is the, is the manner in which it's being done with the current head mechanic that you have, because he's been there for a long time and has a tremendous amount of experience. He just does not have the qualifications that you're writing into a new job description. So bothers me a little bit that we're kind of pushing him out of that position by writing a new job description that he either doesn't have the qualifications for or it's not feasible on our behalf to give him those qualifications when he know, when we know that he potentially could be leaving. So that bothers me. And I'm just gonna make that statement.
Sure. And I, just to make a point to that, I do want to, before all of this was set in motion or anything was ready before it, I even actually spoke to Jim or Jenny. I actually did go out to physically the shop and have a physical conversation with the head mechanic and with the assistant mechanic and explained my thoughts and kind of garnered their thoughts from the whole process. And it was actually said to me before I even asked that he would be willing to step down. So it's, it's not something I think that is ideal for him as far as he's worked his way up to be the head mechanic, but he is at a point of understanding to it to a certain degree, but I do.
And I won't speak for the council, but I would be agreeable if you discovered it was necessary for there to be a transition time for this transfer of knowledge that we could make a small additional preparation for. That's just me. That's not the council. Any further discussion?
Oh, yeah, I still have a question. Are we gonna continue looking for an engineer?
It's my understanding we are.
We are? Okay. Because I, that's, that's the trouble I have is, and I understand it's the need for another person. I mean, we've got a vacancy on some of this, and I know Mike's overloaded. But also, if, if we're paying part-time engineering for, and that continues to grow and get bigger, then it's much like the mechanic position, we're, we're sending it off someplace. And if we can get it in-house, it could be cheaper for us down the road. That's the only thing that I'm concerned about. And that does give pay, so.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion to approve these three positions as presented? Raise your right hand and let the record show to you now.
Very much.
You received the minutes of the July sixth meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand and let the show of the past man this week.
I'm so embarrassed. I have nothing.
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
And I have nothing to add to this meeting as a jury.